Hey, welcome to the line making it the whole. The date is Thursday, October twenty third, twenty twenty five time six P M. And with that, we call the meeting for order. We have all councils, we have one council online, Council Penlet is online, the rest of the counselors in there are in chambers with that call me to order. The adoption of the agenda, do I have a motion to adopt the agenda? Okay, second.
Second.
Council Broden, Council Abbott seconded, and any amendments changes?
Yes. I am number seven point three, the garbage reception by law. I don't know that Mr. Burr has the answers yet. But he was looking so I suggest we just put off the agenda.
Okay. All right, any other amendments changes?
Do we have any close piece at all?
Okay, with the item seven point three being removed from the agenda, all in favor of approving the agenda with the amendment?
Yes.
Harry.
Some feedback from somebody this.
There may be some feedback if you're online, if you could please mute if you're not speaking. It's only Jamie. Jamie, you may have to mute when you're not speaking.
I was just muted, so was it just happening? I'll mute right, is it happening right now?
No, no, it sounds better now.
Okay, I will mute unless I'm speaking, but if I pardon me when I hit my button, sometimes it doesn't unmute instantly. So if I interrupt, I apologize in advance. Thank you.
Okay, we'll move to public participation. Is there anyone online?
Uh, no one wants to speak.
Okay. With that, we'll move to there is no delegation, we'll move to the approval of the prior minutes. Have we had a motion to approve October sixteenth, twenty twenty five? Okay, with like Council Broden, second like Council McGlocken. Okay, amendments changes? Oh, okay, all in favor?
I, yes.
Oh, okay, Harry. Rising for the minutes.
I think everything's business. Why don't we just leave it at that?
Unfinished business number seven point one, a budget meeting, and this is the approval of the just a box pop up of the capital operations, supplemental and utilities, Mr. Chirkoff, we will hand it over to you. You can walk us through your presentation or answer questions.
That's great, thank you.
Chris, oh, could get that, our point that one was in there.
Carl, is that TV still not working?
It works as far as I know.
Maybe you need to get that going.
Or is it that in the way, in the way of your presentation, Joe?
Uh, no, not at all.
Just need Crystal to look me up.
Oh.
What?
I know nothing.
You're not looking at it.
Can we edit that?
We can use it again.
It could have been worse, I guess.
Well, you know. It's like a discussion.
Oh, it's another first.
Just just check that you are on the left.
It's that's the next. Here was the presentation, kind of beginning, the same as this handout.
Yes, so we'll go through the presentation. So what I've done and your comments before Ron, the numbers are page numbers are added to the PowerPoint slides as well as to reference to the package that you were given. Just as a preamble, so this is, the PowerPoint slides are just a kind of a compressed version of the package that was sent to you previously. It just to focus conversation and then there's a requirement to review a little more specific details. Those are included like the line by line items in your agenda package.
This is the same building receipt in P D A, right?
This, you didn't get that one in P D A. This is a supplement. I'll handle the electronic version after the meeting. This is just for guiding the meeting.
This isn't in the agenda that's provided?
No, this is just for the presentation purposes.
If you, if you wouldn't mind, Joe, just telling me which page in the package we're on for reference, please?
Yeah, no problem.
Thank you.
Wait, so what did you go through on the, on the paper you handed up at my feet?
Sure.
Or, or your board, if you'd.
Yeah, let's get started, I guess. So where we left off on our last meeting. But the water budget and the solid waste budget, and so we kind of left off on those utility budgets where is the wastewater P increase. There was a question regarding the reserves and if we would go to on your slides here and for Jamie, you don't have this, you refer to what to your last meeting. I didn't include that in the package. I'm sorry, Jamie, I was kind of different there. So what we presented before the discussion was, was there's a hundred eleven thousand dollar surplus in wastewater with a five percent increase in user rates. And the discussion topic was that, well, are we putting away too much? Should we possibly reduce that? So I wanted to clarify, and so we're on page three of your.
This is the only one that's a funny numbered page.
But the slide, so wastewater, the note is that there's a surplus. However, there's expenses of eleven, hundred eleven thousand dollars and a surplus of eight, nine thousand dollars. So what's important to remember is the revenue figure includes the parcel services tax. So that's a partial tax, so that's ninety eight thousand dollars. So that's not money available to the village. It's actually repaying a loan from the land fund. And when we built the wastewater treatment plant. So if you take that out of the available funds, you're running a deficit in wastewater on a cash basis. So I would not recommend reducing the user P increase of five percent. If you wanted to have it net zero, you probably have to look at thirteen percent.
A to thirteen percent increase?
Yeah.
Well. So I'm sure if you, if I may. Council Abbott, the, the number stuck out as big surplus. The director of operations said, you know, spitballing it, he could see ninety K of must do improvements and he can nod over there, he agrees.
In ways where?
Yep. This is road stuff and pipes for the.
Pipes to the.
Well, as remediation of the sewers, I correct the. Could join the table.
I'm good, David.
Because that was a major case for me. It would have converted to me a case of, and my point was, I don't think the happy homeowners of Kelvin Grove would like to see a nine hundred dollar surplus. Given that they're paying a thousand bucks passed already.
Yeah.
Plus, plus their current.
That's right. I mean, you, you will remember that there was a bit of a pushback on the parcel tax when the wastewater treatment plant had been remediated and hurt. But yeah, I mean, if this doesn't actually reflect with the expenses, then, then we have to, what? If you were, what is the surplus, Joe? There's a, there's a non surplus once you pay the.
Negative nine thousand.
Yeah, nine thousand dollars.
Yeah. So that's, so I just wanted to give in context, so that the ninety eight thousand dollars that's included in revenue for the first wastewater is not available to the village. It's repaying a loan that was taken out from the land reserve. So when you factor that out on a cash basis, it's actually running a deficit at the moment.
So doing a deficit with a five percent increase?
Yes.
I, I, I don't like real good news, I thought, I would find the director of my operations, so I pretty much figured out it's like parcel tax came in twenty twenty two, which you did. And you had the sheet showing year over year till now. And it showed, you know, twenty, thirty grand surplus for three years or something like that. So generously, they got a, but I saw a hundred grand in surplus. Pretty normal for such a big project to keep it going. I, I, if the director of operations tells me we need stuff on the roads that are all to do with the plant. And I'm going to believe him and the number should go in and we advise that residents in Kelvin Grove.
We have nothing to remedy sewers next year.
The weekend.
We totally cross businesses.
Okay, then I think we should cross that bridge when we come through.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I don't have anything in for sewer remediation.
Okay.
So five percent seems reasonable.
That, that's my recommendation. Yeah.
I think we should, I don't think we should run a deficit on something like a water utility to.
I mean, why, why would be the first thing?
But this number we see here says three percent.
No, so the rest of the total revenue process is five percent. There's other items in wastewater such as ransom, or that kind of stuff. So the actual number for the increase in user rates is five percent. This is just to compress them. There's other items in there. Yeah, well, can you give a question?
No, I just did a comment. I don't think we should be running a deficit on a utility. I mean, but we do have a surplus from prior years. But can make that a small surplus.
Small surplus from prior years.
Yes.
But we don't have anywhere near money put aside for what's coming next. We have to, that thing's only going to live fifteen years at best.
Anyway.
And they've paid off the last one. So let's not keep making those mistakes.
So I guess maybe a point for discussion for, would everybody feel like gets a consensus is is five percent across the table, kind of what that is in previous years, okay for now, and then we revisit this in future planning and our strategic planning for twenty twenty seven to twenty thirty on kind of like what's coming up down the table and what we need to fund through user rates?
I think we need more, more information here to, if it's running a deficit like I can tell you're inferring, we need to understand that more.
That was the dinky deficit last month.
And it's about on a capital, so there's about thirty six thousand dollars in depreciation. So if you want to go cash to cash, you take out the depreciation, I mean, you take out the parcel taxes, so it's about thirty grand or something like that.
So, Mr. Black.
Thank you. So I'm hearing council's concerns, particularly Council Abbott. I have to say that I completely agree in terms of proven fiscal management.
Joe, I can't remember if just Joe and I, it was Joe, who was it?
You mean Carl.
Carl, we're talking about sort of the whole notion of a reserve policy and how Joe could present this even as placeholders temporarily. I don't want Joe had it ever had the chance to get back to that or not yet, but to, to Councilor Abbott's point, if you had something to work toward with respect to reserves and in particular certain amounts, percentages every year, there's no discussion when the stuff comes up. Unless you choose to deviate from your policy. So with that, am I still on the right track? It's seeming that would be helpful to council.
I think we're on the right track.
Okay. I'll just remind us that when the water and wastewater funds, that amortization is actually collected. And in the water, in case the water is used to pay down debt, and what happens to the amortization collected wastewater?
I am that.
So that, that paying down the loan from the land fund, you need an additional ninety thousand dollars in addition to the.
To create a surplus, basically. Yeah, so the ninety eight thousand dollars you take out from revenue, there's three six thousand two hundred in amortization.
Yeah.
So net thirty.
Within eleven thousand deficits, so that gives us twenty thousand dollar surplus.
Yeah.
Yeah. So we're still running a slight surplus with using amortization to pay down of, of the internal loan. Council.
Thank you very much, Mary. I think that, I think we have the table pure and right. I get here, I'm not sure those hundred homes in Kelvin Grove fully understand stuff. The parcel tax came about because of property that was sold just at the end of Mayor Burr's reaching start of mine. And at that time, there was an opportunity to self-finance something versus telling the happy homeowners, go get your own ten grand and pay it back. So I think that there's a bit of an education piece for us to go to the cage years after we've gone through our budget. And I know you guys have got a hundred home addresses. Maybe we could do a little mini report as to what, what your, but your piece of the budget looks like. Because they're not going to get a new treatment plant gratis at the village on a cheap loan.
Next time.
Next time.
That's my speculation.
Yeah, I, I understand what you're saying and we're going with that. I guess I would supplement that with, so it went with the self-financing and we're paying it as your interest effectively. And what would it cost if we went to MFA and bought the loan? So you would, it would have been paid for interest charges.
Well, it, it, let's call it what it was. It was generous. The opportunity was there. It was generous. And a counselor can kind of can speak to it, not particularly well received as in looking at gift worth from both. And so I'm somewhat aware that a hundred homes equals, you know, twenty percent of the village. And maybe they should know a bit more about our, this segment of the finances than they normally would. So I would, I would think in our budget process here, I mean, if you're living in, in Brunswick or central this, this mean anything, but I think the higher homes, that's a, that's a big number. And it affects them directly in their profit book. So I think keeping them up to date just might be something, could be a one pager. Ask them if they want and do one of these clean whole things and say, call in if you got any questions. I wouldn't suggest we do it during the budget time. But maybe some other time, but that's for my colleagues to think about that too.
I think that's a great idea.
I would concur.
Yeah.
Totally support that, yeah. So, so, so Mr. Chirkoff, I'll leave that on you to think about that in your worst plan.
Yes.
But on the additional one.
Um, and this, Council Penlet, I know you, this was kind of what you brought up in the previous meeting. So does it, has this kind of sufficiently explained the reason for what shows a surplus but actually isn't?
Yes, very much so. And I think that if, yeah, like Council McGlocken suggested, something to make it crystal clear to the residents of Kelvin Grove would be helpful as well.
So are we going to point out at the same time that we, have there repairs coming? Well, you know, you can tell a story, but it's all a whole story, not off.
Well, yeah, that's only half the story. There's the other half.
There's a maintenance overhang, that's maintenance, not capex, which still has to be funded. Don't know what the scope of that is yet, although we have now, to use the word scope again, we have scoped the entire thing, video inspected. We know where this breaks the main, we actually, November first, now finally, they're showing up to do the manhole barrel repair, which has been budgeted. So we'll see where we stand after that. We're, we're not planning anything next year in terms of sewer management, so there's nothing to fund now for that down the road. I'll also just point out future expansion of wastewater treatment plant will need to have latecomers provisions because we'll be bringing on sections of the village starting with Ocean View. Because that's gravity sewer in the next ten years, let's say. So, you know, it's no longer, it's just going to be a positive tax on Kelvin Grove residents. But obviously, if you don't have sewer yet, you're not going to pay sewer tax. So then you will have to, when you do finally get connected, you will have to pay latecomers fee to defray the cost of the new modular wastewater treatment.
Yeah, just like all the new, new built homes in KG is.
If I may, if we could contain that to a separate. And could we agree that as it stands with the five percent, we're going to go ahead with that this year? And then we'll workshop that in a separate committee at the whole meeting, with kind of like a long-term plan on wastewater and what, on what our treatment plant capital and maintenance needs and how we're going to fund that.
So with amortization, you've been used to pay down the internal loan. And the ten thousand dollar, eleven thousand dollar deficit, we will end up with something of twenty thousand surplus.
Yes. And can they cash in cash basis?
Yeah, yeah, okay, that's.
Okay, so I'm going to mark this off as a, we're moving forward as presented, and then we're going to go on to the next part of the meeting.
Start again, and all of this is simply recommendations, cancel. I, if not, that's card stuff, it's placeholders.
We have a future workshop water treatment plant weekends. Long term sustainability. And put brackets, reserve. Policy.
Noticed residence.
All right, so now we're on to part two, which is the revised capital budget. So in so we're on on the slide deck presentation, it's page four of the paper handout, and then there, and your complete whole package is referenced page fifteen. So this represents the full scope of anticipating capital projects. This ties in to the five-year financial plan capital expenditures. I'm allowed this in here just so that you could tie numbers back. That being said, further to feedback from our previous council meeting.
Page fifteen of that.
R C M, or they could be the whole package.
Each of the four?
Page four.
Page four.
Of the handout.
But page fifty is bigger.
Fifteen is, okay.
Sorry, my question is, why, what's going on between page four and page five?
Well, I'm getting into that, just give me one moment.
Two numbers are called the same thing.
Hang on. So page, so what we're looking at here is just what the full capital spend is in just favor twenty twenty six. And that was a presentation that was consistent with the previous items that were presented. However, we go to page five of your slide deck, which is the next page and your question, Council Abbott. So this, further to discussion at our last meeting and in staff discussions, we separated out supplemental requests, which are new. And, and then in six, wants it is base service requirements, just keep the lights on and what we have to do regardless. So the supplemental requests are kind of what's up for discussion. And so here we're just kind of picking up what we left off before. There's nothing really discussed about the wastewater, universal water.
Sorry, Joe. Do you want confirmation from council, but not from council that the base is acceptable?
We just get down to page six, that would be the base. So page six of your handout there.
Okay. I think the confusion in the words supplement, these are all capital funding.
Right, so in the original presentation, I had everything in there all together. And I kept that one page, so you can see the summary and tie it into the five-year plan. I just wanted, you know, for the nerds that want to tie up numbers to everything, right? And so what, after discussions and feedback from council in our last meeting, there was a discussion about removing items that were kind of like base service level items and items that were supplemental as in, okay, well, we can just decide to take this in, you take this or take out. Base service level represents items that has to be done. And this is just keeping lights on basic repair or building of existing infrastructure to just keep the water running effectively. So our base service expenditures, and we're doing the Cub project, which is fully funded by for a loan from M F A.
So why would that be a base item? I mean, it's a capex item, right? And it's not funded by a loan. It's not funded at all. Taking the money from that.
Yes, well, that's how we're paying for it, I should say, yeah. And my understanding is that, well, if you don't have the water, maybe you're not going to have your water. So that's an existing service that needs to be.
Joe, want to talk about the difference between base? Do you want to talk the difference between base and supplemental?
I think you're a little bit more concise on that.
Okay, so, so further to what Joe was saying, based on the feedback, we met, we had a discussion about how to tease this out. And so it's more simple to understand. So we divided it into two realms. Realm number one are all those items that are reflective of the existing service. Supplementals are those items that are above and beyond the existing, they're new levels of service for different aspects of the service, et cetera, et cetera. So an example of that is that Brad Paul edition that we were talking about, that would be a supplemental, it's not a, that would be supplemental, the replacement of the windows would be base budget. Does that help? I thought, supplementers are those new things.
I understand the principle you're suggesting, but I'm just confused by what you've put into the base category, because these are water projects, some of them we've been deferred and decided not to do. So why are they base?
Uh, because it would be, I mean, I don't know which ones, but if there are water projects in here, it would be simply replacement of. It wouldn't be adding a new water line, it would be replacing a water line. So that's base budget. If you didn't replace that water line, it would be reducing the service level.
So I think this, but these aren't, these are codes.
Does that, does that clarify everybody? It gets easier to distinction between base supplemental.
If I may, show what, get your page, we'll start on. I think the base is clear, but whether we agree on that base, I guess, yes.
Okay, well, we're all on page.
We're sure, can we get Cole's opinion? So these things are called base, that means they have to be done in part of it, keeping the lights on. But they defer to future works.
If we could, on that one before he speaks, pick a page that we're going to stick in.
Six, we're looking at.
Thank you.
Page six.
Six, which is.
Seventeen.
Seventeen.
So those are new P L Ds, the Bayview design to replace fifteen years of culvert, new Q design to replace eight inch pipe. That was the pipe that we thought we were going to do first, but then we decided it wasn't the most important one and we didn't cover it instead.
I'm not sure what you're talking about the eight inch line, but if we're looking at page six, Cub three is funded, was funded last year up to the two and one point three million dollars. These numbers are unfortunately, the, the, the updates that I provided haven't made it into this presentation, so I had them on my phone. Cub three, we've spent twenty two thousand dollars in twenty five, really mostly design costs. That leaves us twelve seventy eight to go. We're going to spend that twelve seventy eight in, in two, in twenty six, and we don't need any more.
Yes, man.
So that is to give you additional color on that one. The next three projects I've suggested we defer, the culvert and water main projects, we're going to see what we need to do there. So those are Ocean View, Bayview, Creekview, those ones.
Okay.
And then the, the remaining.
My point is that we wanted to, these are not critical base projects that need to happen now. That was a point I was.
No, I, I think the definition is that they are expansive of existing core services.
Okay, I took base was we were going to be going backwards, that's what we didn't do this.
Yeah, now we say we're not.
And now we're saying we're the turn of that. We're fine, it just.
We're saying we have to do them. But they still are part of our base service. These things are about maintenance or replacement of existing pipes in the ground. Supplemental, the it running a new, to like where there wasn't one before.
To give you a little flavor, so Crete new design to replace ninety meters of eight inch cast iron pipe. That was when we decided years ago, we wanted to place a piece of pipe, it was the shortest piece and it was cast iron, so probably a good chance we needed to do it. That's why it was an arbitrary, that piece of pipe is no more crucial than lots of other pieces of pipe. Then we decided to do Cub three instead, which was more important, so we shelved that project.
And that hundred thousand was only the design.
It was only the design. It's showing definitely.
So, okay, Black, I'll make a suggestion, and you guys are already hung up in the weeds. And if, if you don't find a way to sort of skim the stone across the surface and. And if you don't find a way to sort of skim the stone across the surface and sort of use the smell test on this instead of breaking it down.
You just need to understand what we mean.
But totally agree, I'd say be, if you wanna get through it, be cautious that you guys don't go down the rabbit hole too deep.
Yeah, on that rabbit hole, I'm hearing the director of operations said we don't need to do it this year, so why would it be in the budget? Which one?
Those three.
They are, they're stated there to be deferred to future years.
Yeah, there is a placeholder for future years.
Okay, yeah, that's kind of how the analysis comes out, but you're correct, we do not propose to fund those in twenty six. What we do propose to fund, the final two, twenty thousand dollars in stairs down here, the objects are falling apart, and and the. The vehicle, which was discussed last, last time.
Both of these were discussed last time.
I think we just kind of went back and forth, we ended up calling the meeting with a further discussion to this meeting. So I guess those are the kind of, in my opinion, those are the two items that. We would need to get just some clarification on so that we can move forward.
My recollection was, and I don't know if we did a straw poll or not, but my recollection was, we said, we weren't gonna do the stairs, just put the barrier up there, because we went.
This is first time we've seen this.
Okay, okay, right, I'm good with it, sorry.
Okay, twenty thousand wasn't, wasn't comment comments the other day, but twenty thousand for for two steps, is that right?
That was the.
Front door.
Give given, yes.
That's good, that's good. The the numbers just do a little bit.
Yeah, I just started remembering that I'm familiar with, I don't know where that came from. I suspect these steps cost forty four, there will be a similar design, concrete tread that looks like this to match them, but they will be on wooden stringers. Why? Because we can't have fill against the wood.
But there's two steps, right?
Yeah, plus a landing.
Plus a landing, yeah, yeah, so I I just think.
Twenty thousand is about right.
So we're thinking.
It's just kind of a number I've had in my head, but all parking, it's about right.
Well, I'm not gonna argue with.
I mean, we need that kind of money if we spend this, we also.
Well, I'm just, I'm just saying, if if it, I feel comfortable that you're saying that that's the number, that's fine, but but if if the number was half that, then it would.
Then you won't mind if something needs to be more fine.
Yeah, it'd be better, yeah. So, but but also, I mean, I mean, so we throw on twenty, well, twenty thousand is one percent of our, of one percent increase, so I, you know, it's it's twenty grand is fast to say, but.
I guess.
We're looking for it everywhere.
If I may, another way to look at it is that if there is company in our budget, that's the thing we have to draw on our existing reserves, because when we get to the very end of this, that we're looking at where we're funding all these projects. And there's a number of items that are coming from our infrastructure reserve and anyone, so that we just less draw on our existing reserves. It's not like.
Okay.
And you guys didn't, we.
Thank you very much, I think for me on these, on these last two items, I mean, it's. Mister Burton, the number seems very big, but if the director of operations says that's the number, they're coming in last, that's great, that's fine with that. It is at the front of the building, it's something everybody sees, uses, so it's hard to fight that one period. With respect to the truck, we can do a straw poll, but I thought it was pretty clear, it was a no, hard no, and that the bylaw chart was gonna be shifted over to the work sheet.
All right, let's do a straw poll. I think we had quite a good discussion around circles, and this is confirmation.
It's, it's, it's a little bit in the weeds, except that I think it's, it's an impression, and it's something the council is feeling strong about, and generally, staff. We'd love you to follow through that, but I think everyone's having a bit of an issue with it.
And then again, this, this has got nothing to do with electrical vehicles, nothing to do with electrification of fleet, this is about a single vehicle.
Yeah.
To be clear, there won't be a bylaw enforcement vehicle, so you know, there won't be a vehicle that has any bylaw enforcement on it. The bylaw enforcement officer's vehicle is made out of aluminum, so the stickers don't stick. So he'll be driving around his Tesla, heading out parking tickets without my law enforcement on there, so that's the result of your decision.
Yeah, there are problems from many years beforehand.
This was an issue before, that was why.
Okay, so. I I'll get you want to do a little. Or Mister first.
Well, I just, yeah, I I would like to move, move the four wheel drive, the F one fifty two works. And I think we're pretty clear that we're looking at, looking for an electric vehicle with bylaw written on it. And with the subsidy to get that from climate action funds.
Okay, so it's just, sorry, it's just backup.
The difference between the cost of a gas vehicle and the electric vehicle, so and and the cost of putting a charging station.
And that was what I brought from time of election, the recommendation.
Yeah.
You just turned it down because you wanted a big vehicle with presence, I guess we're getting away from that now, we're going back to, so the original. We don't need a big vehicle with presence in it, that was why we had a F one fifty, that was the direction you gave to to staff, I was the one that was advised for that. So I'm happy to go back to that, we don't need a big vehicle as presence, if that's what it is. Climate action committee had suggested LG cap funds got used for the delta, not the cost of the vehicle.
Yes.
And to sort of pre, pre spend, I guess is the term, for future electrification, put in some infrastructure for charging. I'm much, we didn't come up with boss charger, level two, none of that was.
Will need to be a level two, which is.
Was was discussed.
Okay, these are recommendations, only what's a straw boat hands to show who would like to four by four to go over to the works?
I would concur. And I have, I have a suggestion, I know a guy that he wraps vehicles, electric boxes, that's his business, I will see if he has a recommendation for. Signage that can be put, taken on and off a Tesla, if that's the case. I'm sure he's encountered something like this before. Okay, so I'll report back.
Okay, the second idea was, was exactly as described by Council Abbott and recommended by Council Broden, and that was to cover the delta between a gas and an electric vehicle.
And and the vehicle that was purchased would would not need to be, would not be a new vehicle, it would be a.
Does that make sense?
Relative, sorry?
Does it make sense if you buy an electric vehicle, the byone that's got a battery that's offused? Is there one new battery in a few years, is everyone aware of the cost of the battery? Thirty three thousand dollars retail. You know how I know this?
Yeah.
Just book one. So I'm the one who's in line.
If if it may, before we start getting into this, I would suggest that we staff comes back to council on that separate item, costing out what it would cost for. An electric vehicle with a charging station or a charging station as an option, but we move forward with the idea that, yes, the public works truck is just, that bylaw truck is going to public works.
Well, hang on, just to be clear, that's an operational decision, council doesn't get to make that. So council gets to decide whether they want to allocate thirty five thousand dollars. If the answer is no, then operationally we'll figure out how to pivot to make sure that that rusted truck with all holes in the floor gets replaced.
Okay.
See, I'll, from experience, there is used electric vehicles that have good battery life that are under thirty five thousand. So if we want to put a number on it and say electric and leave it to staff, I'm comfortable with that.
Yeah, I think we should just get away from the whole bylaw vehicle thing for the twenty.
Yeah.
It's really true. I I think there was an argument made that that we were paying so much mileage that it didn't make sense to not have a vehicle. And my point was, if we needed to have a vehicle that was, that had a high profile, it didn't need to be a six foot high truck necessarily, but it did need to be a marked vehicle. So what it was, my concern, I mean, I was thinking, you know, perhaps the old Chevy pickup truck that we've got, or something to that effect. But but the point is, I think we want to have profile with bylaw, and I think that that it makes a lot of sense in terms of of the optics of. Cars, the bylaw running around the village, not have a bylaw truck to have a smaller vehicle, and financially it makes a lot of sense for us to own it. So then Mister Chirac's given us the answer, the staff should do a report, crunch the numbers, perfect, and.
All right, council is fine, Mister Chirac coming back for the report. Yeah, okay, let's move on, so, okay, so we're gonna flip back one page to page five of the. Our point in for Jamie, this is on page sixteen of the agenda package. So these are the supplements, these are the new items, they're not doing an existing service, so top line is the universal water metering, it's already ongoing, it's fully funded. And then we've got. High tech and successful projects, we've had some amounts that have been incurred and previously spent.
Nothing required for twenty six.
Nothing required for twenty five six, we'll move on to the SCADA score, project score.
Okay, if I can just jump in there, some updates haven't made it in here, so the estimated cost of the entire project is kind of backwards, because it pre presupposes that we would approve adding to the cost. Council will remember that it budgeted three hundred thousand dollars previously, we spent two hundred and thirty thousand of that in twenty twenty five, that leaves thirty seventy thousand to carry over. I have, as the infrastructure committee has seen already, sixty thousand more that I would very much like to spend to leverage what we've done. That will be then done on project score, that means I need sixty thousand in twenty twenty six, not a hundred and ninety.
Seventeen sixty is a hundred and thirty, as you said.
Correct.
Need sixty K.
So it's not three ninety five, it's three sixty.
Okay.
I mean, what we care about now is we'll be funding, additional funding sixty K.
Nineteen sixty K this year, that that is the request, yeah. You may be interested to know that on on project ASAP, the Metron project, the total budget is at three point nine four, the breakdown is two point seven four million dollars on property meters. Three hundred sixty four thousand dollars on zone meters, three hundred fifteen thousand on back office engineering and project management, and five hundred thirteen thousand dollars on contingency, which I hope not to spend very much of. Hoping that the estimated, estimating we've done was correct. So far of that, we spent about six hundred thousand already. The reason that it's yellow is that I don't want those numbers public more than we can help it. But, you know, in my, my spreadsheet, which you haven't seen, Joe and I discussed presenting that as a whole number, because those projects don't have to be big. As the IC has, has been made aware. So that was just more for interest. If we can go on to the the pH water adjustment, which.
Can I just ask a quick question, Carl, if you drew through the chair? You'd said the five hundred fifty thousand contingency, which you hope not to spend, which is great. Since it's grant funding, what would happen to that funding if it did not get spent?
That's a very excellent question, I don't know the answer to, the, the, the word on the street is, we we should spend it. So it will not be spent on underestimated expenses, it will be spent on new pieces, as as for the interest. We had no idea when the time came that they would pre fund the the grant, so you know, we're we're making somewhere around twenty thousand dollars a year in interest.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, so master meters, some additional power, you know, all kinds of things. My understanding is from the guy, he was winking when he said it was that we'd be expected to spend that contingency.
Okay, and can you be creative how you spend that, like maybe re landscaping boulevards and curbs and anywhere that meters go in, just throwing that out there?
We wouldn't dream of that, children on swings and stuff like that.
Okay. We're gonna run out of time.
Okay, so.
Thank you, Carl.
Yeah, thanks. So the project Alpha of the Lindsay and Page Adjustment. I had requested two hundred thousand, Council Brown pointed out that he would prefer to see time spent on wells. And you will see that we have, I have a sort of preliminary indication from Pitto and Associates, the people who did the two thousand five study. That it's very feasible, they seem to be rather busy, I haven't actually had the meeting with them yet, but preliminary cost on a report is fifty thousand dollars, so you will see that's in there now. We still need Alpha, and that that requires us two hundred thousand dollars. I can say that.
Through the chair.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, I guess, you know, I've been listening, listening very carefully in the IC committee, and I heard Tony Prevel speak very eloquently about the, the feed, the possibility. Of well water. Dealing with the acidity in our water. And I guess I'd like to know more about that, and I'd like to know. The feasibility, and I think that we're a year or two early still on this, and and I recognize the the anxiousness to move forward. But I think that that if we can pursue and really understand the potential for the, for wells, wells give us, if if it, if it addresses our, our pH problem, magnificent. It also gives us more capacity over overtime, you know, just more water into the system. And in addition to that. In in the event of a wildfire, that gives secure, a secure water supply.
There's no doubt that additional supply that the IC has has considered and and elected to go with conservation instead, but fair enough, we we can.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
Okay, let's knock over each other, hands in the air.
So. Yeah, if I could just continue. So so my concern is, is if I would, I would like, I would like to understand what the implications of that are. Because what the the installing the two hundred thousand dollars in infrastructure. And then creating a year over year cost of operation, you know, forever, essentially. I I have, I have a concern about, so I'm I'm looking for for different places that we can, we can not create year over year costs. And and if this is, if there's a possibility that this, this, you know, could could take care of that, then I I just think it's something that we really should pursue. And so so I'm, my, my thinking is, is that I would like to have more information before I commit to two hundred thousand dollars for a structure. And then another, you know, whether, my sense was that it was some, it was a kind of a cigarette package estimate of thirty six, three hundred and sixty.
Okay, Council Broden.
Thirty six five a a year. So anyway, okay, thank you.
Okay, I just want to be clear, I see you spend a lot of time discussing these various options, they have clear what the recommendations is.
Yeah.
To do the two hundred thousand dollars pH adjustment, that is the IC's recommendation, it's six years late. And we're a long way from ever knowing whether we're gonna have a working well that is capable of doing what Tony says in the theory is possible, or if we'll ever get there. And whether we're gonna even approve a budget for these wells, we we are a long way from doing that. I think we need to go with the IC's recommendation and do the pH adjustment, which is, as I said, at least six years later, it might, it might even be longer than we can speak here about it. We owe residents to fix this, we're not the only municipality that's dealing with this, I mentioned my report, you know, Wesley are dealing with huge. Numbers on the on there, you know, hundreds of millions that they have to do. So I, you know, it's not unique, but we need to get out in front of the critics, and I think we should just go ahead and do the pH adjustment. Because we'll be sort of talking about this in another five years' time, still wondering whether we've got a justification for wells, and people will still have, you know, lead in the water.
All right, thank you for that, Council, any other comments?
Okay, I'll just make one comment, I think, again, we've been talking well for over three years, we have a wildfire. And our water supply is cut off, we, that's disastrous. I believe we should get after the well testing now, and the sooner we get after that testing, the sooner we'll know whether we actually want to bring wells online. Because we're just speculating and throwing ideas around, but if we do have a wildfire, we would have wished we had have done this three years ago, so I would be for. Doing the water wells, and in regards to if if they cover off a portion of the pH, then delay the pH and do the water wells, we'll know in a very short order.
Okay, this is, I mean, this is something that we actually have spent quite some time on at stop level, understanding the chemistry of our local water. It may very slightly adjust the pH, well water will require far more operating costs than pH adjustment, because you have to remove iron and manganese. There's also pumping costs, because the well is not where you need the water to be, which is at one of the two treatment ponds.
Okay, I will challenge, challenge that, we we don't know if we're gonna have to remove anything until we test that.
I guarantee there is manganese and iron, I guarantee it.
Okay, that that's why you drill wells to to run those tests. Okay, that that's why you drill wells to to run those tests, Mr. Blackwell.
Thanks, so you dropped down to the rabbit ball. So my suggestion is you're not gonna, there's two camps on this one, for staff to move forward and listen to, for you to be up by eight o'clock, take a vote. It's only a vote to recommend. To counsel, but rule it in or rule it out, is my recommendation.
Okay. Straw vote on wells, all in favor of.
It's a well's report for fifty thousand dollars. Just the report.
Yeah, there's two aspects.
Definitely real well.
Why don't we deal with the queue first, can we do the straw vote on the pH adjustment? Because that's what's been on the table for years, and that's what we need to decide.
It's mirrors. On wells.
Whether the wells either on the table or off, okay, all those in favor, straw vote, remember.
Up to fifty grand, Stan.
Up to fifty grand.
Yeah, we need to know.
Okay, both, motion carried, okay. And again, straw vote, recommendation.
We're going to go through it. We're gonna see a report come out. After the test wells. Or as well, just the report, fifty thousand dollars for a report. This major trancing around where we, there's gonna be five test wells or six, where are they gonna be? They're gonna have to be very professional, get us their best guess, much, and as I said, this is only a guess at the cost of the report. It may come in this, but I need to reserve fifty thousand in case it is fifty, thank you.
All right, I don't want to eat the weeds, but I would challenge that that report should not cost that, there's already an existing report they're updating. We had them on the line with staff, but that's up to you. Okay, let's move to the two hundred, the SCADA, two hundred thousand, straw vote, how many would like?
Could I just briefly tell you, I I totally support the issue of dealing with pH, I really, I understand the issue. I'm just saying that if there's another way that we can do that, it doesn't create a year over year cost.
Can we move on, we just read all these, just move on?
All in favor?
So, Ted, good. Oh, okay, thank you, that is the correct decision. All of the others have been referred for twenty six, as you see in in the last couple, not all the others, the next three, so we're not bothering speaking to them. The next one that's. Well, some of them have been pre funded, the one that's. Unfunded is the forklift slash backup for for the fire training facility.
I believe the correlation was that they would work with the Public Works. That was the recommendation, and that anyone would not be barred, is that?
I don't know.
I don't recall that, I recall that it's a safety issue.
Just give it them.
Yeah. Fire needs it.
We got. What the concern was, was if, because we don't have, because we're in the sense of in the middle of looking at the core review. Whether we should wait, and the consensus was, no. Well, the consensus was, no, we need to move ahead because it, because it's a safety issue, so.
But how is it a safety issue, this is to stage vehicles for.
The fire team.
This is the one that doesn't have brakes, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah, so safety, move on.
Okay.
Excuse me.
Mr. Blackwell.
Yeah, this is a standing resolution of council, this, there's no debate. It's approved, it's on the books, nothing has changed, there's no new information. So my recommendation is just to move on past this.
All right, nothing changes, so then the the final three are nominal amount to. Produce a missing piece from the pipe renovation, which was the kitchenette in the multipurpose room upstairs. For SAR, fire training, such a rescue, and ESS.
In this room here?
No, the.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Okay, I think enough for five grand, next one. Okay, next one is Brown Hall addition, two hundred.
It's Russell's, so this is actually. Just to remind you, this is the the notion, okay, that would be preferred. You'll recall an action item. To do with costing of storage options, so this is where this came from, and at the same time, the two things coalesced. ESS said we're running out of space, the shed isn't working, it's leaking, et cetera, et cetera. So I talked to Dave Butler about the opportunities associated with it, spitballing. The opportunities associated with putting on a two story extension at the back of the building here, one level, simple, not finished. File storage, next level, ESS storage. He said, in his opinion, it's very doable, you can do relatively cost effectively, given the condition and so forth. The number in here would be spitball at roughly two hundred, I don't know what it would end up costing. I tend to be frugal, so I'd like to think it could be done less than that, but the point is here. It's a big bite, council is even so inclined, it's a big bite out of one budget. So if there's a desire to do this, you might want to break it into two budget years.
All right, we're gonna go around the table, get comments, raise your hand if you'd like comment, Counselor McBotton.
Thank you very much, thank you very much, so. Since many of us were just down there today, so. Walk through the gym or walk directly. Straight out the historical society thing, and we're gonna see. Nothing fancy, two floors, up and down. Nothing weird and electrical, we're just building space, space that we can up and down the whole thing. That covers to the current best we all know, ESS needs for the, certainly the medium term, and it covers all of your. Data storage things that you need now. It would mean that we take it out of the wet shipping container down at the works yard, which is in the way of self operations. And we have, and so it's accessible, so the loss to the community is the back wall of the gym. I would, so the idea is that it sort of go where the tank was. Fuel tank, oil tank, it would be sort of at the bottom of the stairs here, and that kind of.
So let's see, that's why this is room. Or the.
Something like that.
So it would go over as far as the windows.
No, we're not, we go as far as the wall here, because there's no stairs there, so it would go.
Just at the back.
Yeah. Twenty feet, twenty feet this way.
Okay, so we've done, so relative to the public, we just got a two floor thing there. High and dry, nice.
Side like the fire hall.
Yeah, okay, the firemen move the barbecue twenty feet in, they do their hot dogs and stuff like that at the back. At the last stage, everybody's happy.
Well, sorry, what are the firemen's?
People are. I mean, over on this side over here, a walkway, once you turn around the corner, I mean, there's.
Two thirds.
Two thirds of the patio, well, it's where there's seating areas, it's a table, it's where, you know, okay. So that stays, it's still big, maybe big, so we're just building our concentric to us, we the office, and they the ESS.
Correct.
And we can do it pretty easy, I mean, wood construction, all this roofline, blah, blah, blah. Get a contractor, it's gonna be done in six months.
Okay, any other comments, Counselor?
Yeah. I'd like to see us do this in a whole, sort of. Precedurally. And project management kind of mentality. Do it correctly, let's go get some sort of concept designs and get some pricing. You know, we just. Spent eighty thousand dollars on stairs, and we spent, oh, we're gonna spend two hundred thousand dollars on this, that's gonna be heated. Can the heat pump handle it, I'd rather we went and spent some money on design and a budget before we went and approved. Two hundred thousand dollars, because I've got a feeling it might not be enough.
So the good.
Hey, Mr. Blackwell.
I, this is basically a placeholder to Counsel Abbott's point, we're on the same page entirely, I don't want to spend a penny. Until I know that in principle, this is something that council wants to support, if council greenlights this as a concept in principle. Then I can take the next step and start digging deeper, the next layer down, to get some preliminary cost estimates and so forth. Before any money is spent, and then I would bring that forward for council's consideration, but because we're in budget now. It needs to be on the table or off the table. So, because otherwise I won't spend any time.
Rephrase my suggestion, I'm suggesting we spend some money to do a feasibility study level.
Run it, Jamie, after Counsel Abbott.
So we spend the money now, with budget now, to do feasibility levels, drawings, study, and get a firm price before we approve anything.
Hey, Jamie.
In in principle, I think it's a great idea, would this mean that we can have the rest of the kitchen back in the hall, that would be a. A hope. That that would be great, I think that would be well received by the residents and the frequent users of the hall. We need more space, it sounds like a good idea, I'm not opposed to putting budget down, maybe with the caveat that. Obviously, we do our homework before we start. We need a resolution of council in order to actually move forward with a project like that, would that be correct?
That would be.
Yeah, Mr. Blackwell.
All right, yeah, so.
I just need to know, I just need to know whether there's an appetite.
Okay.
In which case I'll go further, or no appetite, in which case I won't go further.
Counselor McBotton.
Thank you very much, fair, it'd be quick, hell yes, I'm all in on a two story box to cover some of the answers, all good. Counselor Abbott raises a good point about strong project management. That I won't say anymore.
Okay, I agree with the Thomas make. Just do some research and and make sure we.
I'll take it the next step.
In terms, in terms of the allocation, you said it's a place mark, I see it as part of the budget, it could stay, so put your work done.
Okay, got it.
I would like to approve a budget to do the design. You can add additional budget, make sure we know and find, we can how to fund it.
If I may.
Yeah.
Um, using it in this manner, gives clarity that we want to move forward or investigate the project. Mr. Blackwell will get the finer costs aspect.
So it's just a simple question, do we want to fund a hundred thousand dollars this year, or do you want to fund the design? I'm suggesting we fund the design, it's what I'm doing for, and you have, everyone else can apply them, have a straw poll, and let's move on.
The great idea, direction I need to sort of take the next level to get some preliminary cost estimates that I can, then the future date bring it back to council.
So you're asking for two hundred thousand, okay, all we will do is draw a vote.
One question, if I may. Everybody here is working really hard to push this budget through by. First of December, we say, to do the work that Counsel Abbott's looking to have done, is not getting done before that, correct? So to me, doing a preliminary thing, so that you have to come back to us later, I'm much happier doing the the bigger number and. Leaving it without.
Just one final thought. In the last meeting. Should we try to cut costs and bring down the tax rate, if you fund this, now you're taxing for it as well, just keep that in mind, okay.
All right, all fair, Bravo, yeah, you have to vote.
I heard, I heard putting a hundred thousand aside this year, and then maybe picking up the second hundred thousand in subsequent year. When are you, what what would the timeline look like, are you seeing this being constructed in twenty twenty six?
Thank you, the need is years old.
Yes.
It's needed now, that's the reason why it's broken down, is so it's more palatable. The best way to deal with this. Is to build it now, but I live council so minded, and you just adjust the budget accordingly, if council prefers to bring it up over one or more years, do that too. But it is needed now.
Questions, is it realistic that it would be built in twenty twenty six?
Yes.
I hear the answer.
In favor of two hundred thousand. Okay.
Yes.
That was in favor, okay, motion is recommended.
Again, these are all just recommendations.
Go to speed on this project.
Reluctantly, two hundred thousand.
All right, smart locks, ten thousand.
What's that coming from?
On what?
Get stronger sound.
Can you text with it?
I was gonna get tapped, it's gonna be on an existing reserve to draw down when I'm.
Anyway, move on, move on.
You're on a winning streak, keep going.
Uh, smart locks for all many spoke buildings, ten thousand dollars. Fine.
Yes.
Why, why do we need this, why do we need ten thousand dollars smart locks? I mean, what what?
So that's why it's on there, is because we need it, if we didn't need it, it's definitely.
What issues are trying to fix?
We have, for instance, to Brown Hall, about three hundred thousand keys across the lower mainland. And a zero ability to have any security in there whatsoever.
Does anyone have a stolen?
Well, that's not how you do, I've never had a car accident, but I still wear a seatbelt, so the reality is. If you want to do things properly, you you take those steps, if you want to wing it and stuff.
No, I'm not saying, I think you're trying to fix it, suddenly using rope, it's not broke, then fix it. Yes, I know lots of residents have access to a key, it's convenient for people, they're more likely to put something in that place and take something out again. Um, yeah, the category heat's growing, not giving less, everyone knows what I'm saying, so I I don't think we have an issue. So I don't know why we're trying to fix it, but.
Unless there's any other comments, I'll just call straw vote, all those in favor? Okay, opposed?
Opposed, need to spend it.
Okay, recommendation carried, okay, next item, Joe.
All right, so we've got it through our account capital budget. Page seven is just a query from our last presentation, unfunded items, just a reminder that they're still coming down the horizon. So page eight, and for Counselor Kynl, that's page eighteen of your package. Is the supplemental requests, again, similar to the just presentation change. In the last presentation for supplemental for operating modules, they have been moved, anything that's a base service level cost, we move and include in the current. Departmental budgets, and this is something that is. We, a new item, it's, and it's been identified as we need to do it. And so this is the previously discussed bylaw updates, which is the lipstone. Approximately five bylaws revisions with an estimated cost of a hundred and seventy five thousand dollars.
Mr. Blackwell, you had your hand up.
Yes, sorry, I was looking at, you said, Mr. Chirkup, page eighteen?
Each.
It's page eight of the presentation.
Eighteen of the.
So what I'm suggesting, was gonna suggest here, under the provision of all hazard risk assessment. So to remind council, this is about. Oh.
We're talking two different items, yeah.
It's on the screen, if anyone needs a quick reference.
Okay, this is what I've, I've, I'll hold off to this meeting.
Okay. When Counselor Kynl and I were at the LGMA, Don Listone said he had a junior that was doing these bylaws. We should be able to reach out to him and and get a pretty accurate measure, I'm I'm fine with a hundred and seventy five, but I I think. He had somebody that's done it once or twice or three times, and it was like, he was gonna just roll it over to us, so he should be able to give us a price on that. Yeah.
So he won't be able to give you a price, because he doesn't know how big the bylaws are, he doesn't know how much work would be involved, et cetera. Well, all he can do is offer you a discounted rate, based on the fact that it's either an article, it's lawyer or a new lawyer. Every bylaw is a different size, different degree of complexity, and will require differing amounts of work, so it's not, there's not, I can't predict a baseline. There'll be a range, most expensive of your bylaws to do will be your zoning bylaw, the least expensive might be. I don't know, I can't think of one.
Something minor.
Something minor. So the numbers, where I'm going with this is the numbers here are not reflective of any exact amount, it's sort of representing a range. Ideally, we can get the work done for less than this, these are basically placeholders. If that helps clarify.
We let me believe he's got some communities of her the same size as ours, but it doesn't matter, I'm good with just doing the ballpark and then starting something. Yeah.
So, Blackwell. What kind of timing would this be, I mean, is this a year long project, is it a six month project? Is it a, a guy works part, or bill works part time on this, where, you know, things are quiet, you'll shut down, under street. Mr. Blackwell, thank you, through through you, this is a very good question. The reality is. I I can't hand over the bylaw. And to anybody that's done, I can't even hand it over to Don. And have no further involvement, it takes, it'll take a lot of my time to answer yes, no questions, what do you want to do about this, what do you want to do about that? So it will take hours and hours and days and days and days of my time, so to your question. Depending on how many are identified in here, it'd be ideal to get them all done as soon as possible. Year, two years, but maybe this should, is an issue that should be punted over to council strategic planning.
Okay, I I have to comment, the provincial advisor, this was on the recommendations to update our bylaws, and that that was in August. Thirty first, two thousand and three. Okay, I, I, I have to comment. The, the provincial advisor, this was on the recommendations to update our bylaws and that, that was in August thirty first, two thousand and three. Um, and he said, we had to get on that right away. So however long it takes, I feel comfortable moving forward. Yeah, I, I mean, pumping down the road, that's not gonna help the village.
The good news is, uh, to your point, uh, you now have a building bylaw in front of you. You have a new subdivision servicing bylaw in front of you. So those are two. So the good news is, it's starting to happen.
Okay, any other comments? Uh, just to straw boat on the hundred and seventy five.
Yeah, so I'm sorry.
I mean, I'm very, um. Do you see this? I mean, seems like a lot of work, but it costs a lot too. So time, timeliness isn't there. This is something that could be split budgeted. Allocate, I don't know, seventy five grand this year, a hundred grand. I don't know. I can flip this around the other way and say, you just told us that your time is, your time is valuable. You have a lot of projects on the go. Is this in your top five? Thank you. Through you, I, as a topic, yes. Um, how many can I get to? It's a, that's a, it's a function of a whole bunch of things. Um, what I would suggest here is, even if council does say, yeah, let's, let's, let's earmark randomly five, let's go for it. If it's only, if it only has it be two or three, no harm, no foul. For this one it is. But if it happens that we were able to blast it then, there's more time than we expected and there's no more budget left. Then it's sort of foreclosed on that ability. So.
You can come back for something.
Well, yeah, but that's, then it's, depending where it comes out of, it could be a budget then. But totally.
So, yeah.
Okay, Councilor.
Okay, so I just talked, you know, circle back to that. So first need to hear, I heard lots of councillors saying, no, we're gonna cap taxes this year. And we adding a lot of money into this budget. So every time we approve one of these things, we taxing for it.
Okay.
So, so just, can I just?
Of course you can. Thank you. Of course you can. Okay.
So I'm in seventy five thousand dollars. My question was, you've just done two bylaws. Did they cost thirty five thousand dollars?
Okay, uh, Mr. Blackwell, and then we'll go back to Councilor Abbott and then over to Councilor Brown.
Well, I have to answer that. I'd have to ask Carl and or Joe. Carl sort of shepherded a lot of the work for the uh subdivision services by law. He might have a bigger handle on the final upset amount. If he not Joe might, and then same with the building bylaw. I don't know all, all the invoices are in here, but can I do a B two?
The subdivision, so, so it's about a sixty eight hundred.
Sixty eight hundred. Okay, do we have any idea of the voting body?
I'd have to go and check.
That's good.
Mr. Blackwell, while, while you're answering that, can you also answer us? Uh, the two thousand twenty three recommendation from the province was made. I recall there was a resolution finally approved to move forward on, on updating these bylaws.
Correct.
So, so there's a res- resolution moving forward. So we have to figure out how we're gonna fund them. That was where the, getting the students who have done it before may help up, but the fact that Councilor.
Just finish, finish my thought. So what I'm suggesting here, sounds to me like we don't, we might not need a hundred and seventy five thousand dollars, maybe considerably less based on what we've just heard from one who's under sixty eight hundred, other one not known. Sounds like we might need a whole at this point. Um, I would rather that we reduce that number and if we did underestimate it and the war, and we did sort of run out of money, we'd have to do a supplemental, which is gonna come out and understand that with a supplemental budget, we haven't taxed for it. But I think we should be taxing for something that's a little leaner than a hundred and seventy five thousand dollars, is my opinion.
Yeah.
Um, and maybe is that, is that fifty? What, what is that number? I don't know. Take some opinions on that. Um, but I think we should be doing less than a hundred and seventy five.
Yeah, Councilor Brown.
Right. Uh, I, I just have to really reiterate that we're rec, we're, these are recommendations and um, I, I get, I'm, I'm getting uncomfortable where, where, we're, we're, we're saying we're approving this. We've done straw boats on this, but these are not silos. Um, ultimately, we're looking at the whole, the whole big budget and, you know, we're, I, I, I think I don't want to be uh, looking at uh, the end of the day saying, oh yeah, well, you know, you can prove this, you proved this, proved this, therefore it's five percent. Um, you know, I think um, yes, I, I, I support, support the basic concept of this, but I, but I, I'm getting increasingly uncomfortable setting aside money, you know, in case we're going to need this sort of thing. Cause I do think at the end of the day, we're going to uh, get into it. And we're gonna have to go back and relook at a whole bunch of things, which I think we may have to do any. All right, Councilor McLaughlin. Thank you. I'll be quick, Mayor Barry. Um, unlike the two hundred grand for the extension for storage and ESS, which is relatively quantifiable, because I'm sure we could probably come up with a small number of it being built on time and the, the, being built on budget. Uh, I view that we should change our, our bylaws, do it in sequence. I don't think we should put in a, a, a huge amount of pressure on the C A O to get them all done within the year. Uh, I think he can pick and choose and let's, I'll just suggest pick half the numbers of budget for, for a period to get them going. And if he needs more, have, we'll happily bring it back. Yeah.
Hey. Any other comments? All right, uh, straw hands on the hundred and seventy five K for this. All in favor?
I motion a hundred grand.
Hundred?
Hundred.
All in favor?
Sure. Yeah.
Okay, both.
I'm cheap.
All right, um, moving it along. So on page nine of your slide, dead deck, general government services. Um, Jamie, we're gonna talk about the first one. Um, that's in the art, uh, the package that you have is on, uh, computerable package, page number seven, administration. Uh, so administration includes the uh, current one seventy five for the bylaws, all hazard risk assessment fifty K, okay, and seventy K for an O C P update. Um, so that will be adjusted for the bylaws down in the next round reiteration. Um, if you want to talk about the request that is for the O C P, um, it's a base level service request is why it's included in the operating budget. Um, it needs to be done. And if I recall correctly, it needs to be done quite soonish to comply with the housing use assessments requirements.
It's black.
Said page what? Page nine?
Of, of the, the power plant?
Page nine.
Yeah, where's the O C P?
It's in the notes there.
So, did you have a question?
Oh, no, um, uh, if you want to speak again to the O C P, I guess.
Seventy K for the O C P. Yeah, so, yeah, the O C P is stale dated now. Uh, chances that I'm sure are absolutely bang-ons still, but um things in the world have moved beyond for a number of different reasons. So it's timely for the community to have another discussion about its aspirations, et cetera, et cetera. So it'll be tough to get that done this year, twenty twenty six. But I would argue you would be in a community like mine's, they will be well served. I'm telling you what you know. Be well served not to just bend the formal O C P process. I would say there'd be value in doing some upfront work and uh, working with the community around the issues or uh, preparing everybody for the O C P update. So all that pre-work, I would see absolutely fitting in twenty twenty six. And then you cancel, and you could take on the, the opportunity of the actual launch of an O C P project for twenty twenty seven. So again, to reiterate how it seems rolling out is upfront education, engagement, et cetera, et cetera. What was it remaining ten months of twenty twenty six? Somewhere in twenty twenty seven, councils can then debate whether or not they want to launch a formal process. And to build on that upfront work.
So are you saying the seventy K is for upfront work?
Okay, meanwhile, Councilor McLaughlin, you had your hand up.
Thank you very much, Mayor Barry. Um, I think the seventy thousand dollars. My experience, I know that uh, Jamie Ross of Belkarum spent a hundred thousand dollars before they had to stop because the community was under outrage with the results of the O C P as it was being going through the thing. And it was a six-figure number. So um, since former mayor Brewer is here, he did not do enough O C P upgrade during his period. I didn't do mine. I wouldn't propose you to do it in the last ten months of curfew.
Okay, any other comments? All right, I, I will make, I heard it was upfront in preparation for an O C P. Uh, I am a strong proponent that we should listen to the community. In fact, I think we need to ask the community, what is their vision? We've had uh, changes and, and new uh, new young families coming to the community. It's been a long time. Uh, O C Ps are meant to be updated. This one is stale dated, as Mr. Blackwell explained. Uh, I think it's important to get out and listen to the community, ask the community, uh, if the vision for the community is still the same. That's fabulous. If it's changed, if there's some adjustments, uh, I think any opportunity we would have to get out, listen to the community, uh, I would be supporting that. So I would support uh, upfront work in communicating to the community. Any other councils? Councilor Abbott?
Um, yeah, I'm not opposed at all to getting input from the community. Yeah. O C P is long overdue. No, I'm on any of, either of those two points. Still trying to work out what I need to spend seventy thousand dollars on. I mean, if we going out there, do resident, resident surveys. What is the seventy thousand dollars? Professional fees of what kind? Or are you intending to employ someone to do this?
Mr. Blackwell.
Thank you. Great question. This is like the Brown Hall discussion. If council has the appetite, I'll pull together a report that, that sets up various options around uh, what, what and how things can be launched. Um, seventy thousand is a, is a, what they refer to in this partals as a wag. Familiar with that, Joe?
Can you do a swag instead? Are you familiar with that too?
No.
Well, scientific wild ass kiss as opposed to a wild ass kiss?
No, I don't have a scientific. Mayor Barry went to the con. So.
All right, let's move on.
I don't know how much. Uh, that's more of a placeholder than an, an exact amount, but if there's an appetite, uh, desire to sort of fine tune some numbers, I can bring us more supportive options.
Okay, I, I think that goes a fair question. What are we gonna get for seventy thousand? Uh, I am all for uh, communicating and, and uh, engaging the community, but, but give us a couple.
Bring a report? Yeah, bring us your way and we'll turn to.
Bring that file. Councilor Brown with that.
Yeah, I, I, I heard a saying last night that we really want to, want to be, you know, hearing the community, bringing the community together and so on. And, and I think that we're a little bit more it doesn't need, need to be as formal as starting kicking off the O C P process in the next number of months. I think that, that it needs to be, you know, that, yes, we, we should, we can put money, some money aside. But I think, you know, bringing in the experts, you know, what is, doing some education, what is an O C P? Why does it matter? Um, what, what is the vision in, in more general terms and really start getting some getting the community thinking about it and getting some documentation as to what, what we should be doing. Mr. Black. I should make sure I set the expectations. So when I'm talking about twenty twenty six, um, in simple terms, there'll be no reference to O C Ps. I won't talk about what it is, what it isn't, what I, what I would be proposing is community conversations about what is livability? Uh, green, what does greenhouse gas reduction look like? Uh, and so sessions on these sorts of things. Um, because these are all the cornerstones that, that fold into the ultimate discussion when it comes to O C P time. And if you have a public that have been spent ten months talking about these issues, then when, when an O C P process gets formally launched, everyone has a shared vernacular and a shared understanding. So it makes the process a lot more effective.
Okay. Go back to you.
All right, so just for clarifications, not to move forward, am I deferring this, keeping it on the table? Kind of getting a half.
I think we heard, uh, Mr. Blackwell was gonna stop this thing.
All right, the wag, all right.
Wag the way. Joe, do you want to talk about the, uh, the, that uh, all hazard risk assessment?
Yeah, so there's another, um, item that would be, uh, kind of just touched on in the last meeting, um, but getting the administrative is uh, a fifty thousand dollar amount for all hazard risk assessment. And that's just to get it started, process started, from my understanding.
Yeah, so why don't I jump in on that one? So you, you are familiar with this stuff.
Page is, I'm sorry.
It's eighteen.
Very.
All hazard.
All hazards, hazard risk. That's in the, um, it's in the general budget.
It's in the general budget. So this is about sort of, just to refresh you, sort of about uh, uh, an overarching collection of all existing research and so on and so forth, that to map out how to move forward uh, around the issue of risk management. Um, so my comments are in no way gonna reflect the fact that I don't believe it's important. I think it's critically important. Um, but as you've heard me say, there's a big question marks with regard to our role, the municipality's role relative to the province's role, et cetera. So if, based on what I've heard and the appetite the council has to uh, sort of be very prudent, which is totally understandable with regard to where and how money is allocated to these sorts of issues. This is something that we need, it was just a pull off the tape as an amount, because I don't have an amount. This is, this is which lesson of wag though. This is lesson of wag. Uh, this is just a random dark board throne situation, because I don't know what it is. My hope is that, as you've heard me say, is that this is something that the province would fund. Not least of which, because often maybe impacts, one of the big impacts includes disruption of the local economy, local being lower mainland economy. Should there be an event that it has implications with highway ninety nine? So because of that inherent investment, you, one would like to believe that the province would want to take a senior role in this, which may take the burden off of us. Um, if it happens over the course of some number of months, that discussion slash negotiations, whatever, result in clearer information and bear fruit with regard to this issue. And if, if the municipality does need to pull me up, like, to Councilor Abbott's point, you can always come back to the table for a discussion in April, May, June, July, and then it would mean having to amend the budget and also do amend the budget. So this could save you, it's a twenty fifty thousand dollars. And it could, that's a, that's a lot of money. And that is a place where you could sort of.
Okay, here hoping for the problems coming. Uh, Councilor McLaughlin.
Yeah, I applaud everything, uh, Seattle Blackwell had to say, but I don't see this as an village issue. It should be province like.
Yeah.
And I mean, I these are something that when we go to uh, meetings or speak with like, uh, senior elected folks, first off, our, our cheat sheet, what we want to talk about, what can you do for us? This is your highway, not ours. Things like that. So I applaud where you're going with this, Mr. Blackwell. I just don't see it hitting it first base in the budget at this time.
Uh, there was discussion at Metro about the waterways dumping into the communities, municipalities. So, so you may want to reach out to staff on that and ask them where they're at, because they were going to look at that and, and that would have included Lions Way, North End, District of North End, West End.
Yes, so we're looking to, to see, withdraw that at this point.
Looking for straw poll as to where.
Withdraw.
Withdraw.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right, next item, Joe.
Um, so.
Before we bounce on, can we just touch on some of the stuff we've just gone by?
Mm-hmm.
Just quickly, um, so the numbers this year's budget versus previous years. So administration. Um, the actuals or the forecast for this, for this year's is um one point eight two five million.
Where are you?
On page nine.
Page nine.
And the budget was a hundred and fifty K, at least, if I can do math. Um, that, you want, you, you want to attribute what they've, that uh, over budget overrun was?
Um, there's, the forecast is, uh, it's gonna, it's not really, it's, it's a guess, best guess, um, it's gonna change. There's some stuff in salaries and benefits that require year-end adjustments. That's probably gonna bring it that down. Uh, cause we're not projecting forward to the last quarter. It doesn't also incorporate some year-end adjustments I need to do. Uh, because we're not projecting forward to the last quarter. It doesn't also incorporate some year-end adjustments I need to do. So it's likely to come down. Um, that would have been about, for the delta on that, about sixty grand, fifty-four thousand dollars. Um, and then communications was a big one. Um, so the forecast for twenty twenty five is a hundred and twelve thousand dollars. Uh, we budgeted fifty-seven, eighty thousand. We had Telus and T S Sky operating about four months, three months at the same time. We transitioned and so we ended up spending a lot more than we needed to or we'd hoped to have spent on communications.
Sixty K more communications we plan?
That's the expectation by the end of the year, yes.
Can you just page on the public works?
Um, we're not there yet.
I'm holding my position. We have the same position we use. Maybe you just prepare to tell us the deltas you want us to announce.
Sure. Okay, on that, say page nine of the PowerPoint presentation and for Councilor Penliffe, that's page thirteen is the council expenditures. The budget was a hundred and seven thousand. We're at forecast to be at seventy-eight thousand dollars. The budget for twenty twenty-six is eighty thousand. Nothing's really changed there. Um, the twenty-two budget included amounts for a by-election and we didn't actually end up spending a lot of that money, so.
Does include the council salary corrections?
Yeah.
You're taking this year?
Yeah, we, we'll be catching up in this. Two-three thousand, it's not going to affect that.
No, it's not a big number. You're not going to get corrected this year.
They are going to get corrected.
If I may, Mayor Berry?
Yeah.
Thank you. That stinky little general election that's happening in twenty-six, I don't see it being accounted for good for.
Um, so we do have an election reserve that we chip into each year. Um, there's about, uh, it's in the general, it's a subset of the general reserve.
It's about sixteen thousand dollars. And an election's forty.
Yeah, so I mean, we could possibly increase that for twenty twenty-six. I feel that's a good point. Thank you very much for reminding me of that.
Those I should put on adding taxes.
Who's going to get a clause? Who's going to be in the election?
There should be string the same cost.
That's a very good.
That's a cost saving technique.
And then the last one there is on that page slide is EOC. EOC hasn't really changed at all. Um, the big double there you see, and then on the detailed notes, a detailed breakdown on, on page twelve of the, of the create a whole slide presentation is the Channing Creek. So there's enough, we expect to accept that that many back. We recovered a hundred thousand dollars. We'll be filing more claims for the remainder. Um, just waiting for the last bits of invoices coming in from B C G, which I think we're basically done at at this point. So I'll be filing the rest of the claims, but there's in the overall five-year plan in twenty twenty-six, there's not setting amount in revenue. So it's effectively net zero. And there, so as far as the EOC, it's actually no real change. So the next one is public works. Abbott is looking to address. Um, so for public works on page ten of the slide deck.
So Joe, do you want to get? Yeah, I want to get ticks from council on each of these pages. And then you know, and everyone's on the same page.
There, is there anything that you, from what we talked about for administration and council and U C, the requirements for their pension, or are we okay with that?
With the general fund? Thumbs up in the general fund? I think you're good. Right up to the extra for the general election.
Yeah, general election, exactly.
What was that on the page, Joe, the day before that?
Administration. Well, sorry, was one of the corrections, you're going to get, you're going to change the seventy K to the O C P to the way it is, right?
It's just a placeholder for now. Yeah. It'll get refined when it comes to council and then it's adjusted.
You recorded the decision on the.
The council, George, principal, all of those last sheets here. So right up to public works. Your endorsement for all.
Hey, Joey, you've got twenty-five minutes. Councilor Blackwell?
Thank you. Sorry, just one negative little thing. In our past, because of that, we don't, kind of seeing the whole fine tune thing to get the number. Director of Operations asked for an employee and and it was taken off the original sheet. I presume the Director of Operations still wants the employee. Yeah, so is that not back in, okay, we sat around the table and that was the discussion. Okay, that lines. So it was funded for two years, unfilled, three years. They left in November twenty twenty-two. Of them twenty-three, okay, whatever it is, we still need that and we need to. So we went, a new employee was hired, Gary. In Septemberish, the following year. But I understand that we were taxing for two employees for three years. Eighty K picking a number, times three, it's two hundred and forty, let's get back Gary out, she's got speed. I'm not trying to spark what people's salary, I'll just pick a number, say sixty for a round number. So uh, we have overtaxed the community two hundred thousand dollars for personnel. If you, when this comes back and you want a person, I would not be happy with taxing our folks for this employee when we've paid for this employee for several years. I understand this is unlike a capital cost where we've taxed for it, we've collected for it, it hasn't been spent, and we're going to go back and do this. Now, I appreciate your job in this financial sector because basically those dollars are funded into our general account. So how can you make the taxpayers happy without taxing them?
Uh, just as a point of clarification, so I know we just kind of discussed this, the position wasn't filled by people working more overtime. So when the, on page ten, for public work services of your slide deck, you'll see that the actual cost for twenty twenty-five forecast is going to go down a little bit, but the, the projections and some items I need to adjust for year-end. About a million bucks and the twenty-five budget was nine hundred and thirty-five thousand. And that budget included twenty twenty-five to two people. So the, I'm sorry, the extra.
So the extra personal.
Yeah.
Well, okay, so anyhow, let's just go with my gross number.
I'm just saying.
Two, two, two forty, less sixty for Kerry. Let's, let's go back to two hundred K is what we've overtaxed. Your suggestion is that the folks have worked overtime, extra time to somewhat compensate for this.
Generally, what is happening is when we look at what's been budgeted and what's actually been spent on payroll and public works, it's been pretty close to what was budgeted.
Have you analyzed what would have saved us or cost us if we had a full-time employee there instead of the overtime?
Um, I have not done that analysis. I just know what's been paid out versus what was budgeted and it's generally pretty close.
So it would have been worth, it might be worth analyzing that. To see what the extra additional costs are with overtime versus a full-time employee.
Well, I take it.
Yeah.
So there's a whole lot of things going on. We didn't, we didn't tax, overtax people because we spent to our budget. We spent to our budget because we had a Q P increase. There was back pay that came out of those things. People got.
That was all budgeted.
All of that stuff. And was, but if you look at our actuals with our budget in the last couple of years, we didn't have a big, a big overta, a big surplus. We spent money.
If, if I may, until, until twenty-five, we are significantly under budget in, in personal plus.
In twenty-five.
Looking at the right. Well, and this is where the missing people are. Exactly. So I mean, I would contend, you, you know, the, the large share above standard payroll that we see in public works department is for standby. We have to have two people on standby all the time. But that's like a budget all day long. It is, it is budgeted. So we did not spend a whole bunch extra in overtime. Anything that, that we did was um, it's mostly manning the yard on Saturday morning. Everything else is I've cut back significantly on certain members who are using coming in early so that they could take water samples and get them to the lab in time. Well, we now have them curried to the lab. So that's a four hours of overtime every week. Et cetera, et cetera. So I, I haven't seen the numbers and I'm looking forward to, we are significantly under budget in twenty-five.
Twenty-five, but we didn't, in three years, we spent, I just had.
Councilor Blackwell's.
On something else.
On something else, yeah. So I tell you what, I'm happy to, I break the point up. I'm happy to accept the numbers as they are right now. Uh, with the provise of that, uh, before November sixth, Mr. Turcox gives us a little more detail. If we charged for these people and they weren't here, where did we spend the money on? The Director of Operations said it's a frugal department. They're showing surpluses. But anyhow, we'll just let you do a bit of work on that if that's funny.
Absolutely.
And as Perma Berry, if uh, although it doesn't appear to be the case, uh, you know, this extra overtime, uh, and stuff like that, if I got Mr. Burr correct, these are all built in, baked in, and that's exactly what occurred.
I'm happy to come back with that, Councilor Brown.
Yeah, I, I guess, you know, I'd like to better understand the standby and, and if there's any other options with the standby. I mean, we've got, we've got people coming in on Saturday. We need to have two people come in on Saturday.
No, that, that's just to handle the recycling.
And second step.
One, okay. So it's one.
Which, which I'll remind you, um, who the recommendation was, that you come out of the L G K. Right, so.
Yeah. It can be budgeted differently than just.
Yeah, yeah, yes. So I'm, I'm just trying to understand that the, the standby.
The standby is a big charge.
It's a hundred and fourteen thousand.
Yeah, it, it is significant. Um, it has to be senior stock. They have to be ticketed. Because usually they're going to be called in for water or poison, or issues concerning water, unless it's still an ice management and then, then it's a rotor. We have, of the current five members, four are on standby rotor. And they alternate, uh, whose prime and whose secondary that needs to get called in. I reminded that the unit contract says that if they are called in, it's four hours of double overtime for starters. So that is where, where I dread skater alarms because people come in for a snowfall. And snowfall, snowfall is two people come in, uh, both on getting eight, eight hours regular. That's a lot.
All right, we've got about fifteen minutes.
Which is really helpful to understand what.
There's no reset they can do remotely. They actually have.
Increasingly, we are seeing that and, and I hope to demonstrate very soon the value of spending a three hundred thousand, three hundred and sixty thousand actually in our now asking for on skater in segments and overtime because they don't have to come in.
Yeah. It was one of the reasons why the committee recommended it.
Anecdotally, I know that to be the case already.
Okay, Joe.
Okay.
Excited.
All right, so just one last thing, still a little puzzle board. Even if that's it, budgeting twenty twenty-five, nine hundred and thirty-five thousand, we forecasted just being a hundred thousand dollars more in the budget. Yeah?
Um, I'm sorry, which, which, oh, uh.
Page ten. Page ten, we forecasted to spend a hundred thousand dollars more this year than the budget. And I noticed that too. I don't know why the past budget is so much higher.
Um, I think the reason why I put in that little slide here or that supplemental information is to show that in total, it's generally about the same. It, we can revise the formulas based on actual experience and how they're allocated. We have a limited amount.
Do you remember the bottom line, Joe? Not how they allocate, I've got past that because they were quite a lineup each year.
So ten percent increase.
There's a, there's a hundred thousand dollars more in your forecast than what we budgeted last year. It's not an under.
Oh, the eight fifty-one versus the six.
Nine thirty-five versus one one hundred and thirty-nine.
Waste water is.
Yeah.
Big increase.
Um, yeah, hold on a second. That. Um, I'll have to get into deeper into details for specifics on that. I suspect that part of that is the, the.
As you take good notes, just. I, I would say the twenty-six budget is realistic. Was it the question? Maybe even conservative. I, I do hope to see a, a reduction, even further reduction in, in overtime for callouts. Intent in the horizon, as you could practice, twenty-six include the sixth employee?
Yes, I think. Yeah. All right, so we can just finish off here on page eleven, protective services.
Can I just add, sorry, to each check? The, the recycled asphalt pavement, I now need another forty thousand dollars for the road. For aggregate. Forty thousand had been funded last year, but for this year. But now I'm going to need forty.
What we said, so we concluded the forty was overstayed. Forty-eight.
If we're going to line the entire road with minus, three-quarter minus, um, road base, it's going to cost forty dollars.
You were going to do the, the ditching and that, which is.
That's forty thousand.
Which is going to make a huge difference.
So, yeah, but if we don't resurface the road, it's just going to go back to what it was the next winter. So there's two, two bridges here. We can do half of it for forty thousand. It would be all of it by. And, and doing half of the forty is not, not upgrades, just because there's, I've now looked, there's sections that, that needed, but, you know, I need about half the road. And it's only from the gate up to the.
Might be for half and just grade the road.
We'll have to.
And see how it looks.
We'll have to spend the next forty, next year, but.
Well, that's the only grades up because the ditches are, are, are working right now. So you might have a little bit more.
Yeah, and this, this, I'm still finding on adding two culverts that I'm told are not necessary, which they are. So, yeah, that's going to help. We have the culvert material in the yard. So, yeah, I'm just saying that ultimately, we're going to have to spend enough for it unless we change our mind on the, on the rack.
Hey, Joe.
Um, all right, so it's moving forward. So we're going to come back to, staff will come back to council or committee hall with detailed payroll versus budget actuals to see where the delta is and how close we are to what we have been doing. And the next one is protective services on page eleven of your slide deck. Bylaw is on page eleven of your, create the whole package. Now, again, with the fun stuff with forecasting, so this is actually the one item on page eleven of your create the whole pack. You'll notice that salaries and benefits are fifty thousand dollars higher from twenty twenty-five versus the twenty twenty-five budget or the forecast for twenty twenty-six. It's going to come down. It should be around hundred and fifty in total. It's going to come down because when I forecasted the, the year in amounts, I extrapolated the amounts that's made for the summer workers. So when it takes those out, it's going to come down for total salary costs. So that's why it's artificially high for the.
So you just pre-raised it on a monthly basis.
Yeah.
We've got the four was going to be.
Yeah, I tried to move tie.
All looking new numbers that come back.
Yeah. Um, and then, um, also with parking meter costs is going to come down. Uh, there was, uh, should be about thirty-five thousand and thirty-one K in the last year. Um, it's, uh, again with the corrosion and there's a couple of items that are charged once per year versus, um, kind of extrapolated. So that's going to come down as well. Effectively, what I'm trying to get to is bylaw is going to be a little over budget, but about the same. But when I come back, I'll fix those forecasts and, and then you can see, see that. But there's nothing really to look at here as far as bylaw, as far as I can tell. It's pretty much a base budget. Um, and then the fire.
Although, if I can interject, I will point out that our parking revenue from the half-based parking revenues double what it was before because of the, the increased uptake on the.
Uh, and. We can discuss how we get to the revenue. Um, and also I believe that internally we're working on a staff report on total revenues like that. Sir busper parking. By law, parking units itself.
Could I just pick up on that? Uh, was there any reduction in ticketing as a result of people? Because some people were getting tickets because they couldn't go over and yeah.
Exactly. I've asked that question. I don't know yet, but I. Exactly. I've asked that question. I don't know yet. I would, you know, ideally what I'd like to see there is no tickets. Parking revenue. I would also say that we're looking to improve Wi-Fi access, public Wi-Fi access by utilizing Wi-Fi coming off the kiosks. So that we can, people who don't have cell signal can use the app.
Okay, we've got ten minutes and we'll look for that in the parking report. Thank you very much for that. Sure.
Um, yeah.
Quick question. Are we gonna be looking at parking fees? We had the schedule for that was for like November, but. Actual parking fines, that sounds part of the budget against here.
You have a report on that one. I don't know what that is on the agenda, but.
Okay.
Yeah, the the video has proposed new.
All right, Joe. Um, right, so I'm finishing off protective services. So fire. Fire is on page nine of your creative whole package. Highlights on what the differences are. So when we look at the column of variance, twenty twenty six budget is twenty twenty five forecast. Um, so for instance, for communications, there's a a reduction in the expected budget in twenty twenty six of forty six thousand dollars. Um, twenty twenty five included about thirteen thousand for security system, dispatch services, radio levy, and. Forecast again, similar to what was going on by law, there are certain items that are paid earlier in the year but aren't. Repeated in the last quarter. So when I adjust for these, I shouldn't have extrapolated, it's gonna come into about seventy three thousand dollars. Um, for 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 the actual expected amount in twenty twenty five. Uh, so it's not gonna be the hundred and three is too high. Um, and maintenance costs, which is another significant item. Um, twenty five forecast is two hundred and forty four thousand. This is gonna be about that. So what happened in twenty twenty five where there were major repairs for old engines? Uh, to the tune of sixty thousand dollars and with just a little bit of tweaking on. Projection, that maintenance account, including major repairs, it's gonna be about two hundred and eight thousand dollars. Still higher than what was budgeted in twenty twenty five. Um, twenty twenty six budget is kind of down to base a little higher than what we done in twenty twenty four, twenty twenty three. And lower than what was forecasted for twenty twenty five as we've done these major repairs. Um, but. I don't see that in the future getting any, you know. Smaller. It's it's an aging fleet and we're gonna have to fund and incur money to maintain these trucks until we get new ones. Okay, Council McLaughlin and Council Broton, and we're gonna wrap this up in about eight minutes. We'll move on to the other items. We still have other agenda items.
Thank you very much, Henry Barry. Not to reveal what that number might be, but in terms of the compensation section, salaries and benefits. Looks amazing like the same, which would imply that. Potential fire chief is not in this budget.
Fifty eight difference.
Yeah, so the forecast globally weren't paying a fire chief, so that's why it's low. Um, the budgets were assuming that we had a part time fire chief, so it doesn't include any supplemental to have a full time party. So that's basically status quo, assuming that we had somebody in part time and that's what we're expecting to get to. But that's why twenty twenty five forecast is so low is because we didn't pay Barrett.
But twenty twenty five and your twenty six budget are two and a half grand apart.
It's twenty twenty five. We assumed we had Barrett.
Yeah.
We didn't know. We didn't know he wasn't in design.
Oh, sorry.
So the actual was different by fifty.
Okay, so that's just not any.
Okay.
Recognize this is operational, but I think it's really helpful for us to have some kind of understanding of. What the what the what the costs are with these fire engines because in terms of the repairs. Uh, because, you know, I think it'll be. Uh, really helpful to understand how how urgent it's gonna be to replace them.
Well, I can give you, just to give you a favor, sixty two's that was transmission for forty eight thousand dollars. When it when it throws the transmission, what do you wanna do?
Exactly.
Same as the black hole.
Yeah, I just think it's helpful to to understand that.
That's a black hole you had to have it.
Yeah, it's hard to extrapolate as to what one might expect to fail next on these trucks.
Yeah.
Uh, this is the downside of teaching vehicles, as Mr. Turcox said. Although we can get the recertified, they're gonna break down.
Yeah.
Should they for the four million dollar acquisition? No, but they do for some strange reason. So it'll be hard to say, but. Uh, what what the costs might be, but you shouldn't expect that they're gonna be big ticket items for the foreseeable future.
So the the blower, whatever it was that went on the other one, that was like forty thousand as well.
Of the total?
Yeah.
Yeah, sure.
No, twenty. It totaled about sixty sixty two. In extraordinary measures.
Right.
Um, okay, so with that presentation of fire and explanation, is there anything that requires follow up? Um, uh, other than in principle, are we agreeing that this is kind of what it's gonna look like for the next year?
I'm interested to see what would you force all this stuff through.
So yes, you got the green light.
Okay. All right, so that concludes about what we get for today.
One of the reserves we can do that next time.
Yeah, push that meeting. Okay, thanks, Mr. Turcox. We're doing that. We'll move to number seven point two building by law, Mr. Blackwell.
Uh, thank you. So this is on the agenda for council request. You wanted to talk about it. It is good for you to discuss.
Okay, as you will recall, we voted with building by law second and was it second and third reading?
Yeah.
And then we're hoping that you would either repackage or come back to us with something that. Perhaps the council could think of and so.
So the short answer is you didn't want to grant second meeting. Uh, you wanted to bring it to the committee to hold the discussion. Uh, you'll hear me say this with all of these technical bylaws, which are all driven by technical standards. There's nothing for council to discuss. We're not gonna start discussing whether the B C building code elements are appropriate in the bylaws, et cetera. These things, I would encourage you to approve quickly rather than delay. This is to say it's here for you to discuss. However, whatever you want to discuss, I had nothing for the bad. You will recall that Mr. Elder Brad gave council sort of a. An overview of the high points, so there's nothing for.
Okay, so I think just a sort of second stage, the bylaw was put forward. You gave an explanation. It was voted down by council. Counselors that voted this down.
Got first.
Second and third was against.
No, that was.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, any discussion here?
I would call it. Two. I have a question that you described as excellent question. Um, but of course, the answer, one of them was about the state code. And you didn't have the answer. And the other one. I'm trying to think, it was coming to mind and maybe it was, it was coming to mind was, oh, it was about about. Fire fire resistant materials, which we should be looking at any those into.
I'll make a note of those.
Yeah, and we described it as excellent question, so I. Resemble the mark you just said that.
I can answer. I can answer through the chair. First answer, we're at step code level three. Out of five currently.
And does that line up with the rest of the national where we need.
I don't know. I can't tell you. Uh, it's a good question. Don't have the answers to that, unfortunately. Uh, with regard to fire resistant materials, great question. Don't know what the bylaw specifies. The B C building code does address that, so to the extent that. That's sort of introduced in this bylaw. I I'll have to double check with David principally. The big. Let me back up. So you may recall, Mr. Hillbrand indicated that Listone did for, I think it was U C M. Three boilerplate templates for large, medium, and small communities for building models. The idea is that you take them off the shelf relative to your community and then you fine tune them to tweak and to adjust. That's what this is. The inflection point, really, the big difference between. Other than, you know, minor administrative stuff, the big difference between the boilerplate and what we have is some language I wanted to put in there. Provisions I wanted Ralph, Mr. Hillbrand to put in there around geotechnical provisions. Because the old bylaw left us a little hangover and uncertain with regard to. Um, risk. So this is sort of eliminated to to the extent we can, eliminated that 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 risk concern. That's the really big shift in this final. All the rest is sort of boilerplate. B C double code related stuff.
Although, if I could, I also have a laundry list of about thirty items, mostly centered around water and water conservation. Like landscaping requirements, no indoor water features, no outside water features, a whole bunch of stuff. So we're not quite there yet. So we need a few more readings.
Can I ask that staff communicate those concerns and. Rather the council table? All right.
Yeah, I I think my point was more that there's some work yet to do.
Sorry, sorry, Carl. We'll have to talk about that later. Those are great ideas, but they, the the building bylaw isn't kept for those. We'll have to figure out other ways to do that.
All right, council members, any other items that you would like to ask staff while they're here?
On this.
All right. If there's nothing, what are you looking for in this? As for the law, do you look for any anything in particular on this side?
Unless there's any concern, we'll bring it back, bring it to the to council for consideration of second and third reading.
Okay. I think council's fine with that. All right.
Is a building bylaw? A building bylaw doesn't need to get a public hearing, is that? Because it's not, it's not land use.
Through you. Thinking the the. Those matters that are eligible for public hearings are set out by fourteen and local government. And I can't remember the the full list. There's only four items. Two of the items are sort of a little bit esoteric. One of those is land use contracts. I can't remember the fourth one, but the other two are O C Ps.
Because council kind of wanted us to. Read to town where we're playing on the other bylaw. Um. I don't have pretty words in my mouth, but with the, I mean, I think residents are more likely to want to. Or read a building bylaw than they are a subdivision connection. My, my opinion.
Mr. Blackwell.
Should we, should we go along in both of the same way?
So as a professional, I would tell you that you do not want, it's highly improper and irregular to send subdivision servicing bylaw, which is purely driven driven by M M C Ds. And other engineering provisions or a building bylaw, which is established driven by the B C building code. And shop it to a community and ask them to provide technical advice that may well conflict with the B C building code, et cetera.
Who's gonna ask people to take you to Boston?
Well, that's what these are. So so whereas with zoning bylaws, you absolutely want to consider sort of garnering. The technical bylaws, like the B C building, the building bylaw and subdivision bylaw. Those are administrative tools that staff use to be able to process subdivision applications. So right now I have three subdivision application on my desk. I don't have this bylaw to rely on, so I have to make up these standards. Uh, I need this bylaw to give me the authority to establish these standards. The standards are, Burke, Mr. Burr, do you want to give a quick? Ten second overview of the standards and you.
You know, they're they're very basic guide. How are you expected to to make your development meet the standards of the community? Things like codes, street lights, sewer connections, number of fire hydrants.
Fire flows.
You know, it is it is pretty much stuff that happened back in the day at Hock. We've had three separate phases of development in line state. This is now to govern enforceable standards for for future development of a subdivision, not of an individual development. This is subdivision of piece of land into more than one.
Lot.
A lot with dwellings on.
All right, so we're gonna bring this to the council.
By strongest recommendation is bring it forward.
Recommendation. All right, show hands. Okay.
It was, it was one.
All right.
There was one thing that I noticed when we looked at this the first time, we said G V A. Uh, there was a bylaw that wasn't one of ours. It was from that copy and paste.
I forgot to look.
I can't find it now, but I told you it was based on.
All right, I'll lose item number eight, reports, development variance permit process. Mr. Blackwell.
Uh, this is on your action, council action item list. Um, this is, you wanted to report on this. Here's your report.
Hey, any questions?
Okay.
Well, thank you.
Yeah.
Hey, Council, I have a question.
I have a few questions, so. Um, since this is a report, this is not coming to council for any decision.
Just information.
Information report. Um, my question is, the board of variance, how does this affect the board of variance? Because currently, things default to the board of variance. All right, but this, this the subdivision, sorry, the D V P process doesn't mention the board of variance. So. It comes back to who decides whether it goes to the board of variance or not. Um, and I think last time I I thought it was. The board inspector that did that and then got told, no, the resident just picked a route. I don't know that that's really helpful for residents. I think the board of variance has done a lot of good work over the years. They really understand the community and the. And the, use a term that maybe some people don't like, the softer, more nuanced expectations. I still think they are the correct people to make those decisions.
Mr. Blackwell. Thank you. So. Um, I hear what you're saying. The board, this is the notion of a board of variance, as you heard, this is a holdover from an earlier era. And it is in the planning law, it is one of, in my opinion, one of the more challenging. Areas of administration because of the vagaries associated with it. So in terms of practice, how this has played out in municipalities is essentially one of two ways. The more sophisticated use, the sophisticated municipalities create policy that establishes the difference between minor variances and major variances. That's how they differentiate, there's private and so forth. Setting that aside and taking a more simplistic approach, the standard is. Uh, those variances that are. Not forced, not required. Because of peculiarities in land. Go to the T V P process. They're out there optional. And part of the reason is in municipalities, and you're fortunate to have one, you rely on professional technical planners that have a full understanding. Boards of variance don't necessarily have that, and you can't build a system around. A specific crop of people that you may have sitting at the table. Because you may not have that the next year or the year after or five years down the road. So. Those applications, those issues, those matters that boards of variance typically review are those matters that are not. They're they're hardship matters, meaning they're they're matters that the person has no choice around. It's because of configuration of the property or something that forces them to have no other option. That goes to the board of variance. That's that's a standard approach. It's the question of whether I had one extra two meters on the height of my roof. That's purely subjective and subjective individual. That's not hardship. Because it's not a hardship and it's subjective, that goes to the D P process and done by professional planners. But that's not what this report is about. This is what council asked for is clarification on the notification processes. Associated with the development of applications and that's what this addresses.
Okay, any other questions, Council?
Yeah, I have a few questions.
Okay, you've normally been about five minutes per per counselor, so. You can wrap it up in the next few minutes. We were shooting for eight o'clock. That'd be wonderful. Normally, about five minutes per per councillor, so you can wrap it up in the next few minutes, we were shooting for eight o'clock, that'd be wonderful.
I don't think I spoke for five minutes, but sure. Um. Okay. I heard two different things, I heard, what have you, the integrated things, we're gonna, maybe you should do a way. Um, well, you said they integrated, they carried over from past era. Okay, um. And we've always just defaulted to a board of areas, because that's what we had, and I think they've been good service. Um, so that's why I thought I'd like to see that, um, so. Where it stands now. Who's giving the person the advice whether they should go to the board of areas? Is it gonna be you? You can decide whether you have board of areas or not.
To a degree.
Yeah, and then, okay, and then it comes to council, and I'm, we respect that you qualify to make that decision. Then come to the council, but then council actually get to decide whether it goes forward or not, and this is where we got the problem handed for me, because. I would much rather have the board of areas who typically, or used to be an architect, a lawyer, and a builder, and another architect, developer, and a builder. I think they are more qualified than the five of us, um, so the part where it comes to us, for us to approve. Um, is where, you know, I I just feel like, yeah, we support areas, they're more qualified than we are, that's where it becomes an issue.
You would be providing recommendations, could you?
Yeah, so effectively, and then council will just do whatever you say, so think, think of you making this.
That's right.
Funny you say that, because another provision in the local government act, the council has the authority to delegate decision making for development permits, variance permits. Not development permits, although that's true too, but development variance permits to staff. That's you have, you have the authority to delegate those specific types, it's not current logic to be specific, to staff for decisions. And lots of communities for reasons of, uh, uh, speed. That's, that's a fairly standard process, it's quite common that they do that, problem is, I recommend you don't do that. Because you may not always have a planner working here. So you can't put a card against them. Right now, you're lucky they do, but you can't build a system around me anymore than you should build a system around who happens to be at a board of areas table at any given time. You have to build it on the, on the process rather than the personalities.
Councillor Allen.
Yeah.
Okay, we'll move to public questions, anyone online wishing to speak?
Uh, no questions, no.
Okay, motion to adjourn. Second.
Yeah.
All in favor?
Yeah.
Proposed, carry, thank you.
Have a wonderful evening, everybody.
Thank you.
Very much.